Yes, we're recording.
All right, Kenmore City Council is now in session. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember File.
Here.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall. Councilmember Marshall.
He's here, I can see him.
Present.
There he goes.
Now hear me?
Now we can.
Okay.
All right. It helps when you unmute. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. Will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda. Yes? Somebody want to say something? All right, next item on the agenda is the proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is widespread and has a devastating impact on survivors, children, families, and our community. And whereas domestic violence crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and social barriers, and is sustained by indifference. And whereas ending the cycle of this vicious crime requires the courage of survivors and the support of the larger community. And whereas our efforts must extend beyond the criminal justice system to include housing and economic advocacy for survivors, working with young people to stop violence before it starts, and reaching out to friends and loved ones who have suffered from domestic violence. And whereas I, David Baker, Mayor of the City of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, to hereby proclaim October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Kenmore. Now therefore, let us honor survivors by promoting peace in our own families, homes, and communities. Let us renew our commitment to end domestic violence and its brutal and destructive effects so that domestic violence has no future in Kenmore or beyond. Mr. City Manager, just a quick question for you, are we doing purple lights this year?
Yes, they're on the dogwoods in front of City Hall.
Yeah, but I mean handing them out like we used to do. No. So if you have a purple light, please replace your front porch light for the month of October with a purple light to remind ourselves of the viciousness of domestic violence and how we need to end it in our community. Thank you very much. The next item on agenda is a presentation. The Puget Sound Regional Council Passenger Only Ferry Study Report, presented by Bill Cerise, Program Manager for PSRC.
Thank you, I'll share the screen right now to share with the presentation for this passenger only ferry study that we're doing.
Please.
Let's see. All right, can you see my screen?
We can.
Thanks, as Mayor Baker mentioned, my name is Gil Cerise. I'm a Program Manager for transportation planning at the Puget Sound Regional Council, and I'm here today to give you a briefing on passenger only ferry study covering the entire Puget Sound. This slide shows an overview of the study that was asked for by the state legislature, and I'll give a little bit of background before getting into this actual study. In 2008, PSRC conducted a study for passenger only ferries. And at that time, the Washington State Legislature was getting out of, they were taking Washington State ferries out of the passenger ferry business. They indicated that passenger only ferries is a form of public transportation. And in Washington State, this form of public transportation is funded and planned by locals. It's like King County Metro, like Kitsap Transit, and those other entities are local entities. And this is again a form of public transportation where the Washington State ferries, a multimodal ferry system is also both a transit and is also an extension of a highway system. So that's the difference there. And at that time, with the state getting out of the ferry business, the PSRC Executive Board asked us to look at passenger only ferries as a form of public transit within our four county region, which covers King, Kitsap, Pearson, and Homish Counties. And that study at that time identified several routes that were identified as near term, medium term, and long term opportunities. And we consider the success of that study is that those routes that were considered for near term opportunities are those that are either in place today or being planned. The last of those that were in near term are being prepared for implementation this year, the southward to downtown Seattle route. But there's also Bremerton to Seattle, Kingston to Seattle. All of those are operated by Kitsap Transit, as well as the West Seattle to downtown Seattle and Bayshawn Island routes. With all that implementation of passenger only ferries, there's a lot of excitement in the region, a lot of excitement beyond our region for this form of public transportation. And so the legislature in 2019 asked PSRC to update our study and add some more things to it. They expanded both the scope of the study and they actually expanded the geographic area. So the map on the left hand side here shows the geographic scope. We're looking at all 12 counties that touch on Puget Sound, and also looking at Lake Washington and Lake Union, a key for this, your community, that we're looking at the lakes as well. We, in many respects, the legislature asked us to update things that we did in 2008, like looking at terminal location capacity, assessing passenger demand and ridership, and addressing capital and operating elements of the costs and things like that of the routes. They also asked us to look at some things that weren't really in play in 2008 or not as much, looking at some environmental aspects of passenger only ferry, including doing a comparative emissions assessment for passenger only ferries compared to other types of public transit or other types of mobility. And then also looking at the prospect of advancing electrification for this form of transit. And so that's been something, there's a news article recently about Kitsap Transit receiving some funding for electrification on ferries. And they, and their, I think their Annapolis to Bremerton route is one of the first electric ferries. So just looking at that type of aspect as well. This slide shows the schedule that we have here. And we started in 2019, and we have to have this study done by January 31st, 2021. So it's coming up on the end of the study right now. But we spent a lot of time in the early days of the study identifying stakeholders. One of our challenges that goes beyond our region and those areas outside of our region are areas we don't know quite as well. So we really worked closely with our regional transportation planning partners from other regions within the study area. We gathered a robust stakeholder database and went through and looked at all the different plans and studies that have occurred since 2008 when we last did this study, and gathered that information to look at what potential routes to be identifying and assessing for the study. We also, we also did a survey, and there was an online survey in May. And that survey looked at, again, the potential routes and terminals. And based upon the studies that we looked at to date, on the far left hand side, those are the routes listed on our survey. There, 72% of the survey respondents said those are the, those are appropriate routes to be studying. What we did in that, in that sense, is we looked at different routes that had been studied. And if a route had been kind of advanced in a studying process, we would include it. If it didn't make it to a later stage in the studying process, we did not include it. So there are a few places that identified through the studies that they weren't as appropriate or not as good of an opportunity. So those were not included in the list on the left hand side here. But we also allowed survey respondents to identify other potential routes if they were able to fill their own routes in, if you will, identifying potential origins and destinations. And some examples of notable routes are in the middle of this slide here, things like Port Townsend to downtown Seattle to Coe to Olympia, things like that. And then the last component of this, where we got all of our different routes to look at, was our consultants. We identified, I forgot to mention in a previous slide, KPFF Engineering is our lead consultant, and we have a team under them. The group is really well versed in ferries and passenger only ferries, both regionally and nationally. So they use their expertise to kind of look at some demand assessments in different areas within the study area. And that was the final place, where we got different routes. And we ended up with 45 routes in the beginning of the assessment. We didn't take every route that somebody asked for within the study, but if they hit a certain threshold of popularity, we added them in. And so that's where we ended up with the 45 routes. We ended up receiving over 10,000 responses to the survey, I should mention. So it was a really overwhelming response, we were really pleased by that. The survey respondents, you can see on the right hand side here, and Watkins County didn't win any extra points for getting so many people to respond to the study. We were basically divided up our survey responses by county. So the priorities within each county were assessed separately from each other. And I think part of the reason we got so much in those areas was because of, there was a lot of news media out in Watkins County, as an example. Another thing we looked at in this study was to, we asked, in the survey, we asked for some feedback on the evaluation criteria for the passenger only ferries. And so evaluation criteria are listed here, and it was broken up by those areas or regions. And we found some interesting aspects of that throughout the entire study area. Travel time was very important throughout, as would be one to think in a study like this. So that was something we kept as a priority throughout the entire study area. And then different areas had also had different differences in their priority. So in our region and Thurston County, both valued ridership as one of their top four, whereas other places like the North Sound or Peninsula were looking more at things like resiliency or recreational discretionary travel were more important in some of those areas. And so we tried to kind of make sure we incorporated those, some area priorities within the evaluation criteria as well. And before I get into the evaluation criteria, one thing I forgot to mention at the beginning here in terms of the scope, is that we are, you know, we have a pretty broad scope of a study for this passenger only ferry study. But one thing I should mention, what it is and what it is not, it really is a high level planning study, similar to what we did in 2008, but it's, but it is not an implementation study. So, for example, the studies that we came up with, the routes we studied in 2008, identified some potential areas, some potential origins and destination, gave some information. And then Kitsap Transit was able to take that information and create their implementation plans and work on, work with their transit agency in terms of how to implement it and get into the details of that. We did not have the scope, time, or budget for implementation aspects of this very broad scale study in the time that we have here. So it is going to be a really high level planning study just to kind of measure expectations on the study and its outcomes. The other thing it does not, it doesn't get into governance or taxes for this type of thing. So again, in Washington State, these are forms of public transportation, and lots of different entities can operate and run these types of services, everything from a public transit agency, a port, a city now has also been added as one of the entities that can run them. So just kind of step back, that's the scope of the study. But as we got into the evaluation criteria over the summer, this identifies the tiered process we took to evaluate. And again, we had 45 routes. So we started off in tier one with some rather larger, more substantial hurdles to address, things like confined waterways and land use compatibility. A really good example for confined waterways is what the state and Kitsap Transit experienced with Rich Passage between Bremerton and downtown Seattle. And that's an area where, again, the waterway is very narrow. There's residences and waterfront properties on both sides. And faster ferries were creating wake wash issues. So it required a number of years of study and environmental impact assessment, that, things like that, before they could get to a vessel design and a service design for that service that now exists between Bremerton and downtown Seattle. So it's not that the service couldn't happen, but it's just that it identifies a substantial hurdle for the implementer that they need to address before they can move on. And so that's what I would just say for all of these things. When you look at information about the tiers that we have in here, it doesn't say that if you stopped at tier one, didn't go on to tier two, that you can't ever have a passenger only ferry, but it does identify the things that need to be addressed before that could move forward. Tier two, the two items shown here are travel time savings and community interest. And so we looked at travel time savings in urban areas as a comparison between passenger only ferry and another public transit mode, the very similar kind of public transit mode that would be most applicable. And then in the outer areas of the study area, we had automobile travel time comparison because that public transportation is not as good in places like Skagit County or Thurston County and places like that. So the more comparable time would be in automobile travel. Tier three, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, but that was a more of a nuanced evaluation, where we created kind of a scoring matrix to kind of identify and rank the different passenger only ferry routes that were identified and evaluated at that stage. And then those that coming out of tier three, we are currently in the process of looking at those and doing a, planning to do a route profile on those that includes more detailed information on the routes and their characteristics. So this is a graphic that shows the process we went through. Again, we started off with 45 routes on the far left here, tier one. And we, several of them encountered things like confined waterways and didn't move up beyond that. I think a great example is there in Silverdale to Bremerton or Silverdale to Seattle. There's some combined waterways involved in those. So that would be an example of some routes that didn't move forward because of that confined waterway issue. Tier two, we looked at, again, community support or travel time savings. And I'd mentioned travel time savings, but community support was identified, whether it be in a plan, if it's been studied recently, if it's, or if it received substantial responses in our, in our survey that we did in May. Those are the kinds of things we use for community support there. And then at tier three, you can see we have basically 18 routes at that point. And, and so in tier three, the evaluation criteria are shown here. We looked at these, a little bit, again, more nuanced assessment where we kind of created a common method of addressing those 18 routes and giving them kind of a relative ranking for purposes of kind of helping us identify, we're not, in this study, we're not doing the same thing we did in 2008, where we identify near term, medium term, and long term in this quite the same way. But you can, one could surmise that those that get to tier three are probably more near term opportunities and have more of a potential. And so at this point, we looked at these characteristics, and I'll just kind of touch on a couple of them that I haven't already. Things like model connection quality addresses where a passenger only ferry would connect to a, to the land. And as, again, a form of public transportation, you should expect to have a connection at that land side, whether it be a light rail or a bus connection, some form of public transportation on the land side would be connected. Or else and/or parking would be a part of that as well, and the ability to accommodate parking. Another couple of things in here, maybe kind of getting more at the, so I guess maybe a couple of things. We have criteria two and three address commuter demand, which I think is, people knowing, know a lot about what that is in terms of our region being a big job employment market. So having ability to both either have existing commuter demand or the potential from new commuter demand. The number four addresses more of the things that were priorities outside of our region, where we talked about that relative recreational discretionary travel potential. And then we get down to the bottom here, we're talking about things like, number nine is getting into that resiliency aspect, being able to provide another alternative where there's only a bridge or a ferry dependency, places like San Juan Islands, where you have to use a Washington State ferries to get there. This would provide another alternative. Highland County, they have a ferry or Washington State ferry and a bridge that gets there, but that could create some additional opportunities for that as well. And I can get into more of these if there's questions on the different criteria later on. So here's the tier three routes that were evaluated and ranked for purposes of the relative rankings. And you can see here, we basically, out of this 18, we then had budget and scope to be able to develop some route profiles for a handful of these routes. We ended up, though, looking at the top nine to see what we could come up with. And because of the recent work that's been done in a lot of these areas, we were able to kind of make some efficiencies of being able to use those recent studies. And I think Kenmore is a great example with some, in the last few years, some studies have occurred with King County, looking at Kenmore as a potential passenger only ferry route. So looking at, a lot of the lake routes were like that. So we're looking at this top nine here, we have about four or so lake routes in there. And there's going to be a lake profile, route profile that includes all the different routes in it. We're also going to have some more Puget Sound oriented ones with Tacoma to Seattle. And also Southwood Beach to Everett are listed in there. And then Bellingham to Friday Harbor as well. And those are all going to be identified as route profiles within the final study. Some of the ones in here, Big Harbor to Seattle is an example. They, through the community engagement that we did in terms of identifying information for the route profile, we found that that wasn't actually a good, there were reasons the community did not support passenger only ferry there. So that, they are not going to get a route profile as an example. And one of the things that we're identifying and finding through the importance of community engagement here. And the Saquonish is in the same, the same situation there. So they'll have information on them, as will routes 10 through 18, but it won't be a route profile like the others. So again, this is a graphic that illustrates that, the, at the time we developed this presentation, we hadn't completed our community engagement, and we still have a couple of meetings left. But it is looking more and more like we're going to have the top one here shown, Bellingham to Friday Harbor will be a great example of a discretionary route. We'll have the four routes that are on Lake Washington or and/or, you know, Renton to South Lake Union also goes into Lake Union. We also have the Tacoma to Seattle and the Southwood Beach to Everett ones also kind of being some good examples of commute oriented routes within our region or crossing our region to another region. So those are the ones that we're going to be doing as profiles in this, in this study. And I should say, mention also, the profiles will address all the different aspects that were called for in the legislation. It'll include things, the identification of ridership demand. It'll include an assessment of the terminal, representative location of the terminal and assessment of the capacity for that. Capital and operating costs estimates and things like that. And then we'll also have the potential for electrification assessment of that in the study as well. And so kind of here's where we're at in our, in our study, we're at the last phase here. We are working on, again, finishing up the community engagement, preparing the graphs to the route profiles, and creating some draft materials to share in a final webinar. We've been really focusing our work on, through online engagement in particular. We just got this study started, we had our stakeholder group put together and things like that, and then the pandemic hit, so we really had to pivot and make this a much more online engagement than we'd originally anticipated. But we have gotten a lot of, a lot of feedback, a lot of success in that area. So we are planning this final webinar. It's actually, it shows here is October, I think it's going to be the first week of November is the update I'm going to provide tonight on that one. And so we'll have some draft study materials to share at that time, including route profiles, including a route profile for Kenmore to UW to share at that, at that meeting. And then get some feedback at that time before we wrap this up and turn it into a legislative study. And this is a slide that shows where our website, that includes the passenger only ferry study materials. And we have a website, I mean, we have an email address for anybody have questions or comments. And I guess the final thing to say on the study is we're also going to include not just information on the routes and that type of thing, but some general information on passenger only ferries and some of the kind of more programmatic kinds of things to look at. So for example, in the Puget Sound, we've, not so much an issue in Lake Washington, but in Puget Sound, there's the issue of operating vessels with marine mammals in there. So whales and whatnot, we've heard a lot of comments on that. So some aspects about programmatic things to consider in implementation of, on a Puget Sound based passenger only ferry. We'll touch on that in the study as well. And so with that, I think I'll just turn it over and see if there's any questions or comments.
One quick one, is this going to be coming in front of the PSRC Executive Committee?
Yes, we, this isn't, this isn't a typical PSRC kind of a product in that the Washington State Legislature asked for us to do it, but they're asking for it to go beyond our region. So we've been doing regular updates at our transportation policy board, but we are going to bring this, I believe, to the executive board before it goes to the legislature. So yes.
Great. Questions? No questions? Deputy Mayor.
I'm not sure this is the right time to ask specific questions about the Kenmore route. Gil, is this, could you answer any specific questions about the Kenmore route or?
The route profile is kind of in development right now. We've had a, we've had a meeting with Kenmore staff, including Mayor Baker. But I can answer, maybe you asked a question, I'll see if I can answer it. I haven't seen the graph route profile yet.
Okay, no, I won't dig into the weeds on it then. I was just kind of curious if you, yeah, I'm just curious about like travel times and, and actual usability for commuters. Because we already have bus service to U-Dub that's relatively quick. And the dock, at least how I understand it, is a not insignificant walk from the dock to the Link Light Rail Station. So I'm just trying to really wrap my head around, from a commuter standpoint, how useful this route would really be in getting folks to either the University of Washington, because where it's going to drop you off is way at the other side of the stadium, from what I understand, which is a really significant walk into the university district or even the campus, the main campus from there. Or if somebody's going on to downtown Seattle, it's still a significant walk to the Link Station, and then they have to make an additional connection there to make it downtown. Do we have any idea kind of what the commute time looks like for somebody who's trying to get to the university or trying to get to downtown versus other options that might be available?
I think, I mean, you're right, I can't answer the specifics on that. I do know it kind of, it did, we did an initial assessment in that tier one through three that looked at travel time as one of the components. It was a really high level look at it. I think that the route profile will go a little bit more in depth and that kind of thing. But what you're, what you're bringing up is a good point for these types of routes, right? I mean, it is a form of public transit, right? So it's, you can't just drive your car on there and make that a part of your, part of your commute as you can with the Washington State ferries. You are kind of looking at blocking on or off at one of the locations, even if you drive your vehicle to that. So, but I think it did come up with a relative competitive travel time competitiveness, I guess, in that initial, you know, tier one through three assessment. And in part, I think because of some of the, you're looking at the travel times of, I think in this case, since it was an urban area, we were looking at comparable transit. So looking at a Route 522 or whatever, or some of the metro services, that would be the comparative that we'd be looking at there. But I think you are bringing up some issues that are brought up on a regular basis on this, on this form of public transit.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, when you have that, when you have more information on that, I'd be curious to see what, how it stacks up to the other services. So, thank you.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Now, I understand that this has also been part of a survey that King County did, where they had incorporated a model of a shuttle that would go from the park and ride, for example, of Kenmore to a E ferry, which is, you know, a little bit more environmental of an option. And I absolutely can support anything that's going to reduce carbon emissions and get cars off the road and increase a happy quality travel while connecting to our mobile, multimobile routes of transportation. I just want to make sure this does come with the shuttle as King County had initially said back in January.
Yeah, thank you for the comment. I think that is something that, you know, is oftentimes, again, because the park and ride is not always right there at the waterfront. And one of the things we've actually heard is people don't necessarily want parking right on their waterfront, right? So, so that's another thing. But, but again, this isn't an implementation plan. So what we're trying to take into consideration are kind of looking at the full costs here, right? A full cost would include, maybe it's the shuttle or whatever, to, from a park and ride to a, to a location. Maybe it's transit service that, if there's, if there's an opportunity for our transit turnaround or a terminal there at the, at the, at the station or ferry dock, that would be an aspect. So if you don't take it out into consideration, you're just getting a passenger only from dock to dock. It's not the full cost of the, of the, of the service or the, or the implementation. And yet, we're not going to be able to go, you know, I don't want to over promise on this. These are going to be, again, a very high level planning study. We'll get some kind of, an assessment of that, those capital operating costs. But it may not be, I mean, it won't, definitely won't be to the level of an implementation in the study. So, so that would be something, again, for Kenmore and King County Metro or Town Transit or whoever, the implementer of that shuttle would be to kind of work through in terms of implementation, taking that route profile and the information we have in the study and using that.
And we're talking about hybrid ferry, right, in E ferry? And we're talking about hybrid ferry, right? In e-ferry?
So electrification is part of the study. And so that is in part because of the, I mean, again, this is something that's new to this study compared to the 2008 study. I don't think we talked at all about electrification at that time. But the technologies have been advancing and it's continuing to advance at a rapid rate. So the consultants are going to have some information. Again, this will be kind of the, when we talk about that programmatic part of the study that talks about that, there'll be something on the advancements in electrification of ferries and hybrid electric and that type of a thing. But also I think we're going to have a kind of a comparative assessment of, you know, which routes are more, more, are more viable as electric or electric or hybrid type of hybrid electric ferry routes. Because you would look at some routes like Tacoma to Seattle probably won't be as good of an option. That's a longer distance than fast, a fast mode or long distance. As I understand it, will not be as good an option as some of the shorter distance types of services. But that will be something.
Thank you.
I think it's always been planned through the initial studies that were done in 2008 that Lake Point would be providing parking that we wouldn't be necessarily running a shuttle from an existing park and ride to the ferry. The plan has always been that the parking would be down there at the dock space.
And I think in some cases, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at ability to provide parking there as well, as well as the transit option. So that will be.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Suresh. Really appreciate your coming out and really appreciate the information you brought to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views that are important to you and to the community. And we ask that you please state your name, city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. Will the clerk please call the first person?
Yes, in one moment, just for the benefit of the council, I currently see three hands raised. I'd like to call them in this order, John Peoples, David Morton, followed by Nadia Silver. Mr. Peoples. Mr. Peoples.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I gotta, I gotta get out of a full screen. So I can see my write-up. John Peoples, Kenmore. Good evening, Kenmore City Council. Thank you for highlighting the problem of domestic violence. If the community pursues this any further, I ask that two items from the resolution be expanded to help reduce the risk of domestic violence. As for working with young people to stop violence before it starts, allow me to suggest that a complementary tactic must be used. That is to teach our young men and women how to, not just what not to do, how to do domestic relationships, including, including marriage right, how to honor their respective partners' complementary, sometimes similar, but often different emotional, mental and physical needs, and how to recognize the signs of an off balance relationship and how to stand up for yourself if that should occur. Men and women are, after all, not the same. As for our efforts extending beyond the criminal justice system, let's be careful what we ask for. Domestic violence is fundamentally about the violation of that trust and tranquility we all have every right and reason to expect in our refuges from that bad, bad world outside. Former Seattle Police Chief Norm Stamper wrote in his book that the law was once uninvolved in domestic affairs, except perhaps where young children were at risk. Sometime in the seventies, the business end of the law was not just invited in, but rather ordered into some brutal domestic situations by local legislative action. Many abuse victims can thank the police action for their lives, but other situations haven't ended well. Two recent cases of domestic abuse and violence made national news for all the wrong reasons. In Louisville, Kentucky, a young woman was involved at times with a man who was himself involved in drug distribution. He was sometimes seen at her home and had had packages delivered there. Kudos to her for freeing herself from that situation. But when the police arrived at her door, knocked and identified themselves, looking to search for drugs and cash, they had reason to believe were on the premises. Her new boyfriend chose to escalate the encounter by opening fire on them. She was tragically killed in the crossfire after getting out of bed. She was not asleep. In Kenosha, Wisconsin, a domestic abuse victim called the police on a former boyfriend after he entered her house and took her car keys. When police arrived to arrest him for violating a restraining order for her and other outstanding warrants, her abuser chose to escalate the encounter by failing to follow their orders and behaving in a manner that threatened the officers. To stop him, he was shot several times in the back. He is now paralyzed and probably unable to continue his abuse of his former partner. The two people most directly responsible for the fates of these two women are their former domestic partners. So when demanded to say their names, I will say its name, domestic violence, not racism and not police brutality in these cases. Good night and thank you and happy Columbus Day if I don't see you next week.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
You're welcome.
Mr. David Morton. Mr. Morton.
Hello, Mayor Baker. May I share my screen?
Yeah, we seem to start that, so please, go ahead.
Many people within a mile and a half of Cadman Materials Asphalt Facility in Kenmore are breathing asphalt fumes in unknown quantities. And they don't know exactly what they're breathing. The smell tells us something's wrong at Cadman. The problem will not be solved by settling.
We're not seeing the screen being shared.
Yeah. I saw my starter starting, so I only have three minutes. Problem won't be solved by settling the dispute between Cadman and PSCAA over notices of construction and violation. Two things contribute to the fumes. Cadman has been illegally using medium curing cutback asphalt to make hot mix asphalt or HMA using a process in which cutback asphalt is heated to 320 degrees Fahrenheit. And the facility has been using nuisance soils to produce an HMA base material. Nuisance soil is dirt, gravel, et cetera, which is contaminated with up to 5% unspecified petroleum hydrocarbons. On 9/11/2017, Cadman Asphalt Plant Operator Bauer told PSCAA Inspector Hudson that one of their two asphalt tanks contained medium curing cutback asphalt, which is asphalt cement dissolved in kerosene. Washington State DOT Materials Laboratory in Tumwater could verify the contents of these two storage tanks. If a tank contains cutback asphalt that is used to make HMA, then thousands of times the permitted amount of VOCs would be emitted into Kenmore's air. It's important for Cadman to stop using cutback asphalt to make HMA. Kerosene, aka jet fuel, is a complex mixture of hydrocarbons. It's likely that Cadman's stack releases lots of unburned kerosene and that an analysis of Cadman's air emissions would show high levels of the components of kerosene. Alkanes make up about 80% of kerosene. The remaining 20% are aromatic compounds like alkyl benzene and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons or PAHs like napthaline, which can cause negative health effects, including cancer in humans. On 3/6/2019, PSCAA Inspectors McAfee and Wells were told by their Cadman contact that Cadman makes a warm mix asphalt. On 7/22/2019, Code Enforcement Officer Baker of the City of Kenmore filed an odor complaint with PSCAA. My shared screen would have showed that on that day Cadman sold 90 tons of hot mix asphalt, not warm mix asphalt. If Cadman used cutback asphalt to make HMA, lots of kerosene vapors would have been released into Kenmore's air. Cadman should be using performance graded asphalt cement, not cutback asphalt to make HMA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton.
Ms. Nadia Silver.
There we go. All right. Yes, I'm ready. Okay, first of all, happy autumn equinox, happy fall, happy Mabon to everybody on the council. This is my favorite time of year. So also happy spoopy time. Also happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. A lot of people in the community celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day rather than Columbus Day for historical and personal reasons. So I want to acknowledge that. And I also wanted to say thanks to the council for a very unsavory moment that happened in the last council meeting. And I do want to support to please look into improving the policies on personal attacks during public comments. Public comments is the community's chance to address the council as a group, not individuals or area and personal conflicts. So if we could improve those policies, that would be great. I also have a commitment to, I guess, our city manager. Months, months, months ago, I mentioned that we don't have any trash cans up along the pipeline trail and people are just dumping dog poo left and right. Well, that seems to have changed since trash cans were installed and people are actually using the trash cans. So that's fantastic. Thank you very much. I've also seen personnel up and down cleaning the pipeline and making sure the trash cans are cleaned out and taken care of. So, and also doing trimming and such. So thank you also. That means, makes me feel like you guys are listening. This being Indigenous Peoples' celebration and also a lot of spiritual time for our community and for those involved in the spiritual community. I want us to recognize that we need to kind of expand, and I mentioned this in an email, so you all got the same email, to expand our holiday calendar to include all religions and all spiritual practices. As I started, you know, happy Mabon, that's for the Wiccans and or pagans in our community. I myself am pagan, but not Wiccan. And those who are also witches who celebrate some of these pagan things along with their Christian practice, if they're Christian witches. So we just really need to end Diwali and Ramadan and all those things. If we could have it on our city calendar, I think that would be showing our action behind our wanting to be equitable and inclusive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Silver.
Thank you. Council, we have three additional hands raised. I'd like to call them in this order. Victoria Grayland, Jim Myers, and Dakota Rash. Ms. Grayland. Ms. Grayland.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my video on, but I'm not sure I've done it.
We see you.
Oh, okay, good. I apologize, I'm I'm having trouble getting to my written remarks. So I guess I'll just, I'll just go on. First of all, I support what David Morton has said. I think he has some important information for us. And also I want to thank the council for all its work on climate. This Thursday, October 8th, there was a training for city council members. And I encourage city councils to take the training on the new climate action toolkit that the King County has released last week. All 39 King County cities are allowed to use the toolkit for free. And Kenmore can use it to supplement the work we're already doing. I have a few comments and questions about the proposed passenger only ferry. Overall, I think that the ferry is a great way to take more commuter vehicles off the roads. I wish the ferry also included a stop in downtown Seattle. I think that drive and the parking fees are pretty onerous. And a ferry would benefit both Kenmore and downtown Seattle. I think this ferry could be part of a visionary future for Kenmore, making it a destination for tourists and city dwellers alike. Restaurants and shops in Kenmore could benefit from the foot traffic. My questions are about the details. Who will be using that ferry? Where do they live? If there are passengers from Kirkland, Bothell, and Woodenville, where do they park? Is Kenmore obligated to provide, provide parking for all the surrounding communities? If there are significant passengers from Kirkland, for example, would Kirkland have a shuttle to the ferry? Is there a way to predict human behavior around this ferry and this journey? For example, would someone starting in Woodenville actually stop to park in Kenmore and then continue their journey on the ferry? Or would they just continue down Bothell Highway to their destination? For the shuttle, will the fair be part of the ferry ride? Will it be free? Will the route be flexible to accommodate passengers with mobility issues? Would the shuttle be available for the business community or to nonprofits when it stopped being used for the ferry? And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Grayland.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Myers.
Hi, it's not Jim Myers. It's his wife, Elizabeth Mooney. Sorry, it's a bigger computer here. So I'm Elizabeth. Hello, council and staff. I live in Kenmore. And I want to thank council today that we're at the city council coffee. I think that is a really nice, comfortable way to talk to council in longer periods than the three. I want to support what David Morton was telling you and also what Vicky Grayland is saying. I would like it if the city could consider putting up a better method so that people who do smell the asphalt fumes or see them, that they could go straight to city council, I mean, sorry, to city website and have a button to push right away. Because it takes about 10 to 15 minutes to file a complaint with Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. And they have little things in there like, you know, are you a robot? It really cut, it would help for our inspector Bridget Baker and the other two that are deputized now to have a much faster way to do that so that we can find out what's really going on down there. I want to say that today the asphalt fumes were emitting up into the air and south. And I took pictures of the air. The blue sky was to the north. And the hazy sky went all the way down to the south, way over towards Arrowhead. So if you take into consideration what David Morton was talking about and the potential that these are seriously dangerous fumes that are coming into our community in North Lake Washington, then the people who may not smell it in south over in Arrowhead or St. Edward Park, they may still be impacted in a negative way. I'd also ask that the council could know when you see emissions, and I really would appreciate meeting with council down at the Burt Gilman Trail right next to the Cadman, Cal Portland's lessee, and that we could take it into our lungs together and make, you know, assessment based upon how nauseating it is or not. I really would like to know as soon as possible whether or not the staff has written the letter that is going to Cadman and, and wondering if about testing the emissions and wondering if we could just think about what our vision is for Kenmore and find out whether an e-ferry from an industrial site is what you would want. Or if an e-ferry on Lake Washington for environmental education and habitat restoration and salmon coming back into our area is consistent more with getting rid of heavy industry, industrial plants. Thank you.
Thank you. Dakota Rash.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. My name is Dakota Rash. I'm resident of Kenmore. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. I'd like to first thank the council again for demonstrating that they are willing to listen to the citizens concerned about the environment. I've been an environmental advocate for a long while. And this has earned me both some ridicule and some eye rolls. But I do largely feel that that's not what I received from you all. So I really appreciate that. The climate crisis, I feel, is one of the most preeminent issues of our time. And I'm very encouraged to see that this facet of government at least is willing to address it and take it seriously. I also wanted to thank the council for helping make Kenmore a city where people feel empowered and safe enough to speak up in a public way along the Burt Gilman Trail, honoring the names of those like Bearden Taylor who were killed by police brutality and the racism blatantly baked into that system. And so really just a lot of thank yous today. I also wanted to say thank you to Rob Carlinzey for coordinating with me on an upcoming event about the environment, which I'm very excited about. That's going to be also partnered with the City of Kenmore, where we're going to kind of talk about the history of the climate movement as part of climate realities 24 hours. as part of Climate Reality's 24 Hours of Reality. It just made me so happy to be able to finally make that first presentation and to be able to do it in the city I love and that I've grown up in. So thank you for letting that happen and being willing to partner with an environmental advocate. And finally, I want to wish you all a happy Indigenous Peoples' Day coming up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I still see two hands up. Mr. John Hendrickson and Stacy No Last Name listed. And I'll call them in that order. Mr. Hendrickson? Mr. Hendrickson? John Hendrickson?
Yeah, sorry about that. I was muted. You got me now?
We do. We can hear you.
Okay, where's my video? Okay. Good evening, council members. John Hendrickson from Kenmore, Washington. Now, I went on the, I want to talk about the budget that you're going to look at tonight with the operating revenue and expenses. This is an issue that the city's been working on and spending enormous amounts of consulting fees to review this detail. And it's really been two years in the making from the last budget cycle. We knew we were going to have this analysis problem. And so when I go on the website last night, there's no, there's no numbers there. It just says estimates of revenue and expenditures for the current year and proposed 2122 budget will be provided at the meeting tonight. And I mean, if you look at how much we're spending on financial services, it's hard to believe that anyone's taking this process in a serious manner. It's not deliberative. So I just emailed you. I went, so this afternoon, I put together a schedule. I summarized our operating revenue. I did the first 11 years of the city from 98 to 2008. And then in the final column, I added 2018. And you can see how simple it is to just analyze this. You only have seven items of significant revenue. Three of them from Kenmore taxpayers, which is property tax, utility tax, and license and permits. And then from regional, you have sales tax, criminal justice sales tax, liquor tax, and the gas tax. How hard is that to do? You can, you can easily understand this and discuss it with the community if you just lay the numbers out there. So if you look at it, you'll see that in 1999, when we hired our first full year, we were, citizens were paying 41% of the total revenue. Regional revenue was provided at 58% of the budget. Now, 64% of the revenue is paid by Kenmore taxpayers, only 35% from regional. And that number's going to go up dramatically. If you look at our license and permits from 2018 back to 2008, it's, if you include what's down in the road fund, it's gone up 72%. You've raised our permit and fees. And in addition, in here, you've put overhead reimbursements. And that's just a gimmick. You're taking $962,000 out of capital projects and running the money in through operating. And so you're gutting our capital project funding. You're robbing Peter to pay Paul. You need to have a sober approach. Do a 10 to 20-year projection. Document road costs, not just the maintenance, but how much-
I'm sorry, Mr. Hendrickson, your time has expired.
How much is it going to cost to bring our roads up to standards? And-
Stacy No Last Name listed. Stacy, we see you.
Okay. Hi, good evening. It's Stacy Valensuela, and I live in Kenmore. And I don't see my three minutes up yet. Should I start?
We see you.
Okay. So I agree with Mr. Morton, Elizabeth Mooney, Vicky Grayland about the problem with the air in our area from the asphalt company. And I also think that we need to do more to save our tree canopy. But one of the things that I thought was really important that he had mentioned this morning at coffee with council is that if they are using the proper supplies going in, we likely would not have as much problem with the air coming out. And we wouldn't have as big a concern with the people getting sick in our community. And I think that's a big key issue if it comes down to the things that they had to do in Redmond to fix the asphalt company there, that we applied the same things here and make them use the correct quality of product going in. And I think the city can do that and make that request and enforce that so that we don't have the bad air and the bad smell and everything. So I think the city council and the city manager, if you guys can both look into that and try to implement that as soon as possible, because it's not a, you know, kicking the asphalt company out of the area if they work together to be good neighbors. And I think that was one of the things that Mr. Morton might have said if he had the time to speak a little bit longer. And I think also looking at his charts, because he seemed to have a lot of information, might help us as well. So I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I see no further hands raised. Maybe we can give it a few seconds. Okay, here we go. Ms. Emily Burnham has raised her hand. Ms. Burnham.
Hi, sorry, can you see me? No. Hi.
We can see you.
Yeah. Hello again. I am, my name's Emily. I live in Kenmore. I was, I got to speak a couple of weeks ago. And rather than go back and reiterate what I said before, I was just wondering, I am very concerned about the arbers, the lack of arbor in Kenmore. And since two weeks ago, on my drive around the area, for those of you don't remember, I was pretty alarmed about the loss of canopy in Kenmore. It is so extreme. Since that, since I have, since I talked two weeks ago, there is yet another big, huge clear cutting on 61st, next to the first one that was alarming. And, you know, rather than go on about the climate change, which is connected to this, and I know a lot of people are like, oh, it's just trees. You know, we need the money for taxes and development. But there's an imbalance. And if anybody is, has their eyes open, they'll see it. It's, it's, I lived here 20 years ago. I moved away for a while, and now I'm back. And it's just like night and day. If I could show you my house on Google Earth when I bought it, and now it looks like, my house looks like a park and everywhere else is just clear cutting. My question, though, is that rather than saying the same thing every meeting, I would love to get some, I would love to know if it's, if I'm just speaking to, if there's anything that can happen, what I can do, how I can get involved, how I can make a difference besides just creating a group on Nextdoor. So that's, that's my question slash statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnham, for your comments. We are certainly doing what we can do to look at tree ordinances and that. And we understand your concerns. And I think there are many of us on the council that share some of your same thoughts. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Hearing none. We will move on to the next item on our agenda. And that will be the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent Agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda. 2001-2026 Capital Improvement Plan for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water, and Facilities. Our Director of Finance and Administration, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and council. So tonight, I think we could say is the official kickoff of the Budget Review Sessions and the hearings that will lead us on a path to adoption of the 2021-2022 biennial budget by the end of November and before Thanksgiving, I hope. Our first order of business-
Before you, before you. And so the way that we are going to approach this is like we have done in years past. We're going to go over each section.
Uh huh.
We're going to get our questions answered on that.
Section.
And we're going to move on and go to the next section. So we don't keep rehashing things. So tonight, we are going to be doing capital improvements, and we're going to be doing estimates. So Ms. Gregory, I'm sorry for the interruption, but I wanted to make sure everybody was sort of on the same page there.
No problem. You and I are definitely on the same page. And as I started to say, our first order of business will be a review of the newly updated Capital Improvement Program for the six years 2021 to 2026. And this program covers transportation, parks, surface water and capital, city capital improvements that meet the definition of a project, which is one that involves a construction or remodel of any city building, decorative or commemorative structure, park improvements, renovations of public streets, sidewalks, parking facilities, water sewer, storm drainage improvements. And then those are financed in whole or part by the city and where cost exceeds $15,000. And the Capital Improvement Program also needs to reflect and be in sync with the city's comprehensive and pros plans. So at this point, I'm going to share my screen. Say, I have to do this first. So I hope what you see is the Capital Improvement Program proposed for the years 2021 to 2026. The CIP presented to you this evening includes 30 projects, which total almost $88 million over the six-year planning horizon and of which 67 million would be programmed into the 2122 biennial budget. From the table on Exhibit A, you can see that the six-year program is funded with a great variety of resources, including significant city capital fund revenues as well as walkways and waterways bonds and county, state, and federal grants. This plan utilizes most of our restricted capital revenues, such as bond dollars, impact fees, and real estate excise tax, and draws down these reserves significantly. I didn't look this up, but I feel that we are on track to spend more on capital projects this biennium than ever before and on projects that have already been underway before the new biennium. Activity on, in the capital improvement projects will be intense. So with that said, the presentations tonight will proceed in accordance with what Mayor Baker mentioned, with Debbie Bent, Community Development Director, first reviewing the parks projects with you, utilizing the project description sheets that begin on page 16. She'll be followed by John Vicente, City Engineer, presenting the transportation projects. Then Richard Sawyer, Environmental Services Manager, will review the surface water projects. And last but not least, Rob Carlinsey, our city manager, will speak to the City Public Workshop Project for which there are, there is currently no project description sheet. I'd also like to point out that in a couple of minor instances, we have made last-minute substitutions of city rate for impact fees or vice versa where needed to keep the funds in balance in one or two of the projects. And this may not be correctly updated on the project sheets, but we will make sure these are corrected before final printing. And after tonight's review and discussion and direction by the council, a public hearing will be held next Monday evening to be followed by an ordinance to adopt the six-year CIP program. The capital funds and the resources that support the projects are a very prominent component of the 2021-2022 budget. So this action by the council will be a key accomplishment in the development of the upcoming budget. So at this point, I'm going to go to page 16, which is the first page.
Before you-
And Debbie, turn it over to Debbie Bent. Go ahead, please. Mayor?
Yeah. Before you left that page, I was wondering, you were showing flood control district money out there.
Yes.
And also $4 million in other grant sources. Any ideas where those are coming from?
Not at this time, not at this time. To do the- Surface water projects that have been on the, on the drawing boards for a number of years. And we're trying to get to them, which was the outcome of the rate study that was done a couple of years ago. But when we get to surface water, I'm hoping that Richard will be able to give you a better answer than just did.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to page 16. And over to Debbie Bent. And we'll proceed through the twin, through the projects. And I will share my screen as she gives you just a brief overview of each project and takes whatever questions you may have. And then we'll move from project to project.
Good evening, council. So there are eight park capital projects and a little over $10 million. And actually, two of those projects total up to $8 million. And those are the two walkways and waterways projects for Love, Boom &amp; Squires. We're going to run through these in order. So the first one is Twin Springs. And this is a project to get the park open, to do the bare minimum improvements. So that would be refurbishing the existing parking lot and access at the entrance of H's and 192nd, constructing a small parking pad off the entrance of H's and 195th. And we may have to do some critical areas work, but we're hoping not. We're hoping to minimize the level of permits. And this, this project is funded in 2021. The funds are actually moved over from this budget. The project was on hold for this, for 2020 due to other priorities and work program items. So this is $227,900 in the budget for 2021, funded with park impact fees and Washington State appropriation. And so we're hoping to get that project complete in 2021. The next project, the Rhodey Gendrum Park Waterfront. And this was a walkways and waterways project. And the boardwalk project, which was the significant part of that project, was constructed and completed in 2017. So what this park capital project is, is the public art component of that project, which will be constructed in 2021, and also continuing the required mitigation mitigation monitoring component, which is five years. And that five years will be completed in 2022. So if you look at the budget for this, there is $26,000 over the next biennium. You have $10,000 in there, which is the cost for the art installation for next year. And you have $16,000 in the 8,000 each years in the biennium for mitigation monitoring. The next project is the Rhodey Gendrum Park Dock Float. This project was completed in 2017. This was a new dock for Hank Carey Watercraft. And after that dock was completed, there are five years of required maintenance- maintenance monitoring for the mitigation plantings. So in the next biennium, this will complete the five years of maintenance of the mitigation plantings, and there's $4,000 budgeted, $2,000 each year. And I believe that is REIT funding, not park impact fees, if I remember correctly. The next project, the Squires Landing Dock Float. This was a replacement float at the Squires Landing Park, which was completed in 2017. Again, there were five years of maintenance monitoring of required mitigation plantings. So the budget for this and the next biennium completes that five years. There is $8,000 budgeted, $4,000 in each year. The next project is the Squires Landing Waterfront. Council received an update in July. So you have had a recent update about this project. This is one of the five walkways and waterways projects, and the purpose of this project is to improve public access to the Sammamish River. And there'll be lots of improvements in there. There'll be walkways and trails and viewpoints, and also a lot of enhancement of the natural habitat. And this has been a project in conception since 2015, when the concept plan was developed. 2017, 18, we refined that concept plan, and we've been in the permitting process ever since. So we are hoping to receive all permits in 2021, and then the construction would be phased over two years to complete the in-water work. So if you look at the budget for this project, over the six years, you've got over $6 million budgeted for this project with a variety of funding sources, mostly including the bond funds from the walkways and waterways bond measure. There's also some Swamp Creek Basin funds in there and a significant amount of grant funds as well. And you'll also see the public art funds because public art will be also installed with this project. And again, you received an update of that in June. So if you look at the schedule for this, you will see permitting continuing in 2021 with construction in 2022 and 23. And then after that, there'll be monitoring. There is 10 years of required monitoring, which is why you see in 2026 such a large amount there, because it's really, that monitoring will continue beyond 26, but we put all that funding in that last year of the CIP.
Hey Debbie, this is Rob. On the revenue, on the grants, could you talk about how much of that is secured versus unsecured?
Yes. So in the unsecured funds, we are anticipating going after a $250,000 state appropriation. We're also going after a King County Waterworks grant, and that is unsecured. As we presented to you in July, we could be between $300,000 and $600,000 of unsecured funds. But we're hoping that as we move towards the 90% design plans, that we might be able to bring that dollar amount down. So right now, we're about $600,000 potentially $300,000 to $600,000 of unfunded, unsecured funds for this project.
And so when we come back a little bit later, probably later this month, to talk about the state legislative agenda, we're definitely going to be requesting a capital budget appropriation for this project. So stay tuned on that.
So the next project is the Loveboomer Park Waterfront Project. This is another of the walkways and waterways projects. Again, the purpose of this project was to improve public access to Lake Washington, including beach expansion, trails, viewpoints, picnic areas and pavilions, and a significant amount of environmental and ecological enhancements. Also be a concession building for Hankary Watercraft. So again, we've been at this project since 2015, and we developed a concept plan to take to the voters in 2016 for the ballot measure, and then refining that design plan, and then going through the permit process. We are hoping to secure all permits by January of 2021. And if we do that, we're then hoping to be under construction in 2021, assuming we get the permits and have a successful bid process. So if we look at the the budget for this, you can see that the significant amount of budget is in 2021 and 2022 for that construction process. And then following that, there is 10 years of required mitigation, which is why you see a larger number in 2026, because that mitigation goes beyond 2026. And so when we brought this to you in July, it looked like we were fully funded. It was tracking fairly well with the budget numbers of a total project of 3.6. Over time, it was about, we're up about 3.6. And I think the bond funds were about 3.2. So we're tracking pretty well with this project. The next project is the Rhodes Endrum Park Boat Shed. And if you've driven down One Need to Drive near the bridge, you'll see that the boat shed is under construction. Construction is going pretty well at the moment, so we're hoping to have the boat shed built by the end of this year. The purpose of the boat shed is to serve the rowing program for the school district and also the community rowing program. And when we brought this to council, we estimated to be about $350,000 budget shortfall, and that number has increased. So we're at about a $410,000 budget shortfall. And based on council direction, council direction was that any budget shortfall should be fundraised with no further city funds. So in addition to that, the school district had promised $250,000 of funds, and we would then be entering into a lease agreement with the school district for their programming. Council authorized execution of that lease in January. We still have not had that lease executed, although the school district is committed to providing those funds. So the $660,000, which is the school district fund and the fundraising amount needs to be, I guess, funded from the Strategic Opportunity Fund to allow that project to be complete. And then over time, when the school district funds come in, and we're hoping that those come in by the end of this year, and the fundraising amount will probably come in over the next two to three years, then that money then would be paid back to the Strategic Opportunity Fund. So when you look at the CIP project, it's, what it's showing is, for the CIP moving forward, is the dollars are committed then for the five years of required maintenance of the mitigation planting. So it's $15,000, but I wanted to point out to you how we're going to fund the, I want to point out to you that in 2020, there would have to be a budget adjustment to pull those funds from the Strategic Opportunity Fund. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to take questions on this before we move on?
If there are any questions, there are two more projects to go through.
Okay, go ahead.
You're going? Okay. So the Squires Landing Acquisition Project. If you remember that in order to meet the RCO conversion requirements to allow 1.5 acres of land for the Squires Landing Park project, and to have more active use, the city needed to acquire additional property to offset that, which would then be retained for open space and for passive recreation. So the city purchased 4.8 acres of land on 192nd Street. And to meet the RCO requirements, there was a house on the property which was demolished this year. But we also need to have that property open to the public to meet the RCO requirements. So the CIP project for this is we have to open the park. So we would be planning some minimal improvements to do that, things like park signage, fencing to delineate where the critical areas are, striping some parking spaces on the existing asphalt, and doing some environmental enhancement. So to do that, we are anticipating there would be about $150,000 from the Swamp Creek Basin funds. And this amount of funds is being rolled over from the acquisition project. So there was money that we didn't spend in acquisition using those Swamp Creek Basin funds that we will now roll over into 2021, so that we can then open that property to the public. Well, the last project is actually a new project. This is the only brand-new project in the CIP for parks. And this project then is proposing looking at adding field lighting to the sports field at Mullins Park. And those improvements were completed at the end of 2017. The park improvements, including renovation of the sports field there. Council has previously asked about adding capacity for athletic fields, and adding field lighting is one way to add capacity. So this project, we would also anticipate going out to the community to ask for comments and feedback, looking, going to the school district, looking at field users before we would actually fully proceed with this project. So we would also anticipate going out for grant fundings, perhaps with RCO or some other grant sources to partly fund this project. And we've currently allocated $650,000 of funds, park impact fees, and grant funds. So that is the last project, and you can see that we would be going out for grants in 2024 through the permitting and design process in 2025, with construction in 2026.
All right, questions? Councilmember Curtis?
I just have a really brief comment. I remember doing these CIPs before we had all these nice little summaries of every single project. This is wonderful. With the updates just kept in process, it makes it really easy to follow. Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is Rob. If I can just add a comment, this last capital improvement for field lighting, this is not going to be without controversy. This is a ball field in a residential neighborhood. So just because it's being put on the capital improvement plan, we should not assume that this is a done deal by any means. You definitely need to hear from the community on this one.
Any other questions? No other questions? We're ready to move on then from parks.
Next up would be the transportation programs, and for that discussion, we'll bring in John Vicente, City Engineer. And those begin on page 34. John?
Sorry, I'm just, with the shared screen, it's hard for me to figure out how to do everything.
Oh, you, okay, sorry. I'm sharing my screen so that the council and everyone can see it as we go, and then I just advance it as you talk.
No, I couldn't do my video because Anastasia had stopped me from doing it.
Okay.
That was her screen. Okay, so I'm going to be discussing the transportation CIP projects. I've got 13 projects to discuss. Within this biennium, they total about $51 million. So the big chunk of our spending for this next biennium. First project is the SR522 West B project. If council remembers, this project originally had $8 million assigned to it from our connecting Washington funds, and to make the bridge project whole, we requested $6 million be transferred over, which left us with just $2 million for this project. So the actual scope of this project is being reduced to fit within the available budget. Right now, what we're looking at is sidewalk improvements on the south side of the roadway, looking at some signal intersection improvements, and then we'll also be looking at the functionality of 61st Avenue as it relates to 522. We're also going to be spending some time trying to secure some additional grant funding to increase the work that we can do on this project as well. But until we actually figure out what our total available funds are, we haven't yet quite got a handle on what the total scope is. That's what we're going to do starting next year. The funding is available the summer of 2021, and that's when we'll begin looking at this project a little bit more closely. Next project is the Sidewalk Gap ADA Replacement Program. This previously was just called the Sidewalk Gap Program, and we had traditionally budgeted $100,000 per year to this project. And what we're doing this year is diverting $75,000 of that to a new project, which is T44 and the 61st Avenue Sidewalk Replacement Project, which I'll talk about a little bit later. What we'll be doing with the $25,000 we have per year is just looking at locations throughout the city where we need to make some ADA improvements, or maybe where we get some public requests to fill some gaps. Next one?
Oh, I wanted to show the nice pictures.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, not much to talk about with that one, unfortunately.
On the screen, there you go.
So this is a new project, the Northeast 192nd Street sidewalks. So right now, if you'll remember, there's a development occurring at 75th and 192nd, the Glass House Development, it shows there in the image. They're building sidewalks along 192nd Street, and with the additional sidewalks that exist just to the east of there and the sidewalks at 73rd, we decided to apply for a grant to fill in the gap that would be created by this project in the existing sidewalk. This is within the school walk route, so we applied for safe routes to school funding for this. And should we get the funding, then it would be 100% covered by this grant. I believe this is one of the projects that is identified in the revenue as other grants, and it's something that we will find out the end of this year whether or not we receive any funding. So it would be sidewalk on the north side of 192nd, where the sidewalk terminates on the west side to the intersection of 75th. Then there's a small gap that was left over when Glass House, when Glass House completes up on 75th, up there at the top. So and that's what this project would construct. And we're looking, again, if we get funding for this, we would know at the end of this year, and we would start design on this in, scooch down for me, John. We would start designing on this in the end of 2021. Next project is the Arrowhead Drive sidewalks. This project has been on our books to do for quite some time. We've been applying for safe routes to soul grants, but we have not been awarded. We are applying again this year in hopes that they will consider this project for an award. This project will build a new sidewalk on the west side of- west side of Arrowhead Drive from Arrowhead Elementary up around the corner, then on the south side to 64th Avenue. Again, this is another one of those projects that is shown as pending grant funding. Should we get an award on this one, it would be 100% grant funded. And we would also start designing on this at the end of next year. I actually would start designing 2022 on this one. Next project is the pavement preservation project. So we are allocated specific, what is that? Each biennium, we're given 101,150,000, $40,000 for this project. And this biennium, we're looking to overlay 73rd Avenue from 182nd to as far north as the money will take us. That project is going to involve overlay. We'll be upgrading curb ramps. And I'm also hoping to address some of the sidewalk panel issues that exist on 73rd. We've gotten a variety of requests to address those. And so I'm looking to potentially use the Sidewalk Gap Program to help cover the cost of those replacements. And so that would design and start next year with an overlay in 2022. The next one, oh, West Manchester Bridge Project. We're all familiar with this one. It's currently in construction right now. We are making some really good headways with building the walls in preparation of building pathways and the bike, the bike path in the sidewalk and widening, moving the bridge out to the west. This project is currently on schedule. As council does remember, back in August, we got approval to push traffic to one lane on the North Ground Bridge to account for the delays caused by the pandemic. And that starts January 4th through October 31st, which will keep us on budget or on schedule and on budget. You'll notice that the bulk of the project cost is occurring in prior years and in 2021. Most of the work on this project should be done by the end of 2022. But we do have expenses going out through the CIP. This is one of those projects that also has a 10-year mitigation monitoring period. And so the years of 2023, 24, 25, I've got cost in there for that. And then 2026, our mitigation costs through the out years that don't show up on the CIP. Let's see, so the Lower Swamp Creek Bridge Replacement. This was on our CIP in 2015, 2016 as an evaluation of the existing bridge. At that time, it was determined that the bridge was structurally deficient. And it was recommended that in 10 years of that bridge should be replaced. That time period is now coming. 2026 is when we should be looking at replacing this bridge. So we've added this to the CIP in 2021, starting, all right, I'm sorry, 2022, we will be looking at funding options for this bridge. There are a variety of options out there that we're going to look into. And then hopefully in 2023, start applying for some grant funds. This, I believe, is also another project that's listed as other grants. This is currently is unfunded. And if we get the additional funding for grants, then it will be funded. The So this is the One Drive Ped Bike Project, one of the Walkways and Waterways Project. Construction has started on this. They've been working heavily on getting utilities relocated. And they're currently working on storm drainage improvement. Heard and got her once they finish that activity. This project is currently on schedule and it's slated to be completed about the end of next year. With the exception of the overlay, which will probably have to happen in the spring of 2022. But the majority of the work should be done by the end of next year. 68th Avenue Ped Bike, another Walkways and Waterways Project. We are looking to advertise this at the end of October. And bids coming in sometime in December with a project anticipated start date somewhere around February 2021. This project will also be completed around the end of 2022. Or I'm sorry, at the end of yeah, 2022, 2021, the end of 2022. I'm sorry, I'm getting my mind mixed up. This project should start in 2021 and be done at the beginning of 2022 with overlay probably happening in the springtime. So a little bit longer on this one than one year. The next one is the 61st Avenue Sidewalk Replacement Project. So what we're doing is looking at trying to replace all of the panels along 61st that are in there impassable. You can see a couple of photos there, not passable the way they exist. And so this project will replace what we can with the funding that we have. We have one grant application still out there where we have not received word, where I did apply for some funding. If we are awarded, then that will provide us additional money to replace more. But at this time, we only have $90,000 per year to replace panels. The goal is to start looking at this project next year. Look at our options for how we want to replace the panels and come up with a plan so that when, within the out years, we can quickly replace panels without having to go through a full design process. Together, I have a template for replacement along this corridor. So the goal is
If I could just jump in really quick. Also, if the state of Washington decides to do another transportation package like they did back in 2015, we're going to really advocate, along with the Association of Washington Cities, that a big chunk of that funding provide funding for maintenance and repair and that significant dollars be allocated to 61st Avenue for replacing these sidewalk panels. But that's only if the state of Washington, the late, the state legislature decides to do another transportation package.
Yeah, and I believe on 61st, I counted over 70 locations that needed to be addressed along this corridor from 170th to the northern city limits. So quite a lot of locations need attention on this corridor where we have accessibility issues. And the goal would be to look at this corridor as a whole and then present to council an option for replacement before we actually begin replacing the panels. The next one is our 2018 Local Road Safety Signing. We received HSIP Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funds to add some signing within the city. The signs are rectangular rapid flashing beacon signs, some speed, speed signs in certain locations. And then some additional sign treatments at Burkeman Trail at 65th and 61st. That, that project is in design now and construction of these improvements should begin next year. The next project is the 2018 Local Road Safety Lighting Plan. Same funding source, Highway Safety Improvement Funds. We received grant funding to add new lights, locations throughout the city where we found that we needed some additional lighting. The map there shows the locations. I will not go through those in the interest of time and when people awake. The work on this has started this year. And we're working with PSC, PSC Energy, to actually install the new lights for us. And that should be occurring next year. And then the last project we have is the SR 522 Gateway East Sign. We had an opportunity working with Bothell to get our gateway sign installed on the east end. If most councilor remember, several years ago, we created templates for signage within the city. And part of that were gateway signs for the 522 east side and 522 west side. And so working with Bothell, they agreed to incorporate our sign into their plan with percentage of the cost being paid for by Sound Transit. We are, we originally had agreed many years ago to contribute $50,000 to the design, which we've already paid. And we have a liability of additional $20,000 for this gateway sign. So pretty good deal, given that our earlier estimates for doing gateway signs were about 150,000. That was five years ago, so.
That, that 50,000 that we paid wasn't just for the sign. It also helped pay for design of the segment that went into Kenmore, right, John?
Yes, so there's a portion, I believe, I'm going to take a guess here, about 600 feet of improvements within the city of Kenmore that Bothell is building for us. So
Yeah, so 600 feet of new sidewalks and a sign for 50 grand is, it's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, so we were looking forward to seeing what the signs can look like. It looked like it's been a long time since these were created. And we're going to get the full meal deal. The, the only thing that we weren't able to get from Bothell was all of the lighting for the, for the sign. But we are giving the infrastructure put in. So if you ever want to put in some future lighting, we've got the ability to do so. That's the last of my projects.
Great, thank you, John.
Question, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I had a question on T35 Pavement Preservation. I noticed that every year it alternates between $150,000 a year and $990,000 a year, back and forth. Why is that?
So one year is spent on design and the second year is actual construction of the improvements.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can, if I can add to that, what we had done is we'd allocated 550 or 600,000, whatever the number was, per year of REIT to asphalt preservation. And so the, kind of the constant flow is about a half million dollars a year. But John can spend it more efficiently if he, you know, clumps it together in every two years.
Yeah, two really small questions. On the Arrowhead Drive sidewalk, I'm curious why, and maybe I should have noticed this earlier. It stops at 64th rather than 62nd. 62nd is, you know, the feeder for both Arrowhead Drive and then the Anglewood Shores area, I think it's called, that goes down to the country club. So there's a lot of, a lot of kids. And so that was one. And then the other, on 61st, the sidewalk panels. It, it seems like we have, I'm, I'm struggling with, do we, are there no grant opportunities for mobility, given that we're really trying to improve this for ADA? It just seems like there must be some sort of grant mechanism for disability-associated improvements.
So to answer your first question, the original grant scope, way back when we first applied for funding, was just Arrowhead Drive up to the bend as it goes around. And the state said, you know, we would think this would be a more competitive grant if you went to 64th. Any further than that, and it's too much money to ask for under the grant. We'd have to contribute more dollars to it. So that's the logic for why I went to 64th. Regarding the funding for 61st, replacement of sidewalk is not very competitive. Actual new improvements are what everybody wants to sell, the granting agencies want to see. Within this last couple of years, there have only been, I'd say, two or three grant sources that were out there that we would actually qualify for funding on 61st. TIB is one, Safe Routes or Wash Dot, Ped Bike Grant is another, and Peterson Regional Council STP Funds. We did apply for the STP Funds and we were not awarded. TIB just will not do this sort of funding because it's not in a generator area. They prefer funding projects that are in destination areas like downtown or community region, community center type areas. They just won't do the way there to some degree. So, so the, the Ped Bike is my last option for grant funding. And if that doesn't work, we can keep applying each year. But as Rob said, the best thing to do is just to look for some earmarks from the state.
Um, I jokingly, more half jokingly, tell John that if we want to compete better, maybe we should just rip out those sidewalks that don't even serve as sidewalks anyway. And then we might compete better because we're not replacing sidewalks, we'd be putting in new ones.
Yeah, sadly, that would probably make us more competitive a couple of years later if we did that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Marshall?
Thanks for the detail on 61st. I, yeah, strongly, you probably remember, I strongly, strongly am attached to seeing some improvement on that. If the council approves a plan, when might we see some, starting to work on it?
Based off of how we've got it budgeted currently, we would start seeing some work on it 2022 at the earliest. Again, we've got $90,000, that doesn't go very far. When it comes, a lot of it's going to depend upon the direction that council gives us on how we replace it. We've got a couple of options. One requires tearing out the trees, which is the cheapest option. The other option is to go around the trees, which is far more expensive. So depending upon which direction, there's a possibility of a hybrid option. So just depending on what is chosen will depend upon how much we can do. But again, with only $90,000 or $60,000 or $90,000 a year, you're not going to get very far. It's going to take a while.
Questions? Okay, Mr. Vicente, I have one back on 196th Street, 192nd Street. You're talking about the developers doing sidewalks on one side of his development and we're going to have to redo sidewalks on the front side of the development, correct?
I know, so the developer is doing improvements just to the east of where we're proposing to do it.
And why isn't he doing all of them?
Because our code requires them to do frontage improvements only adjacent to the parcel being developed. And the place that we're building sidewalk is not adjacent to that parcel.
Well, you see, I'm wondering if we need to change code. Because right now on cul-de-sacs, you're only required to build sidewalks on one side of the cul-de-sac. The other side, you're not required. If you take a look at 73rd, 170th Street and 72nd, there was a brand new house built there. That house is on the market now for $1.697 million. They were only required to put a sidewalk on the 72nd Street side. Never mind Simon's Road or 170th, we'll let weeds grow there, our main street. So these inequities, I think I'm seeing them in a number of areas where developments are happening. Do we need to change codes to, to counteract this? Because this is just wrong.
So that particular property was built for our code with a single-family house that's demolished. If they submit a permit and begin within a year of demolition, they do not have to do frontage improvements.
Why I think we need to change code.
Yeah, and that's, again, that would be another discussion to try
That's a discussion for a retreat.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
So John, just to go off the mayor's question there, what we're talking about on 192nd is literally on a separate block face. It's not, it's not a different block than the development that's happening, correct? It's on a block west of the project. It's completely removed from the new development. Is that my, was I seeing the map correctly?
Yeah, the majority of the work would be on the, the next block west of that development.
And then there's the one little strip just north of it that's in front of a different property, right?
Yes, correct.
So none of it is adjacent to that development, so that's not, okay.
Yes, correct, yeah. There it is.
Yeah, that's in front of single family, that's in front of existing housing on the next block over, so.
Right, but this cul-de-sac there is only one side required.
Well, right, but that's not what we're discussing. Well, right, but that's not what we're discussing right now, so.
That's why I'm saying, do we need to change code?
Yeah, we had that discussion like three, four years ago, I think, but I hear you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Vincenti. Ms. Gregory?
Thank you. We'll move next to the Surface Water CIP, and I will ask Richard Sawyer to join us, and we'll be starting on page fifty-nine with Surface Water Project Number Eight.
Thanks, Juan. So I will be going over seven projects for you this evening. And only one of them is new for the CIP that I'll be going over. And then additionally, I've got two capital program or capital projects that are just transfers to two of John's programs. So, the Spanish River Bridge project has a SWIM capital transfer and the sidewalk replacement project that he presented has a Surface Water Fund portion that is also transferred to that. So, starting with SW eight, this is the one-ninetieth street culvert replacement on sixty-first Avenue. We've started design. We're currently working to complete the thirty percent design phase of this project, which is replacing the culvert, repairing the headwall, the rockery along sixty-first and portions of the sidewalk that had been damaged by failures resulting from that failed culvert. The design will continue into the twenty-twenty-one, where we'll finish up that portion permitting property acquisition. And then we are looking to construct the project in two thousand and twenty-two. So there's a aerial of the, the property area there. The so, yes, that, so, I think that one's been presented and I'm pretty familiar with. So moving on to the next one, we have another project that was discussed a little bit in fall. You recall, we were talking with one of the property owners along this project on Eightieth to potentially acquire that property. However, they ended up not wanting to sell. So this project has actually been split into two phases. And so now we've created this Phase One, which will start on the south end of that property on Eightieth Avenue on the west side, where Little Swamp Creek currently is confined to a roadside ditch where it flows south almost to one-ninety-third place before doing a sharp bend and then continuing on to one-ninety-second. So this project, Phase One, would include one culvert now, and most of the property that we need has been acquired, except for two remaining easements that we would need to get. And this would move Little Swamp Creek from the roadside ditch into a one-hundred-foot-wide stream buffer and then separate that road drainage into a new system appropriately and be treated for water quality. The this project has been pushed out to twenty-five and twenty-six. And the question of grants came up earlier, so this project should be scored well for several different types of grant opportunities. Conservation, water quality improvement, habitat, flood control. It's kind of got a checkbox on all the different aspects with different types of grants. So we would hope that this one would receive a lot of grants. And actually, we'd already gotten preliminary approval for conservation grants to acquire the property. So, the agencies that have looked at this will like this project. So moving on to, so this is a small works capital project, which is a recurring annual amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. And these projects typically are, you know, they come up pretty quickly and have a short design turnaround and tackle types of projects that are a little bit too big for our in-house crews to take care of, but not, don't quite rise to the scale of a large capital project. So this last biennium, we actually did three different neighborhood projects, installing new drainage infrastructure and, and taking care of local drainage issues. Couple photos there you can see from those projects. So these would continue on and, and vary year by year based on issues that come up. This is a drainage facility that currently exists that's going to be replaced and relocated. It's located up around sixty-first Avenue and northeast one-ninety-sixth Street. It's one of our oldest facilities that's been constructed back in the seventies and is nearing the, nearing the end of its lifespan. So, we currently have this scheduled for two thousand and twenty-five. The design actually has already been completed up to ninety percent. So, once we're ready to go, it will just need a little bit of touch-up to get the the design and bid package put together, and then we'll be ready to go in two thousand and twenty-five. This, S W thirty-one, so this is another drainage improvement project located off sixty-sixth Avenue and one-ninety-sixth Place. We noted and been observing some settlements on this corner, and we have had some geotechnical monitoring going on and we're about halfway through getting a design in place to fix this issue and then repair the road. And this project is yeah, so this will be one of the projects slated for next year, finishing up that design, getting an offer advertisement, hopefully constructing next dry season in twenty-twenty-one. This was another drainage improvement project that was identified down in the Arrowhead neighborhood on sixty-first Place and sixty-six. What started as a service request, noticing some cracking and settlement on a cul-de-sac next to the ravine that goes down to Arrowhead Creek. We conducted some geotechnical evaluation and monitoring and found that some historical settlement had occurred. And so we have a geotechnical report with recommended solution there involving some certain spiral nails that they drill into the sides and stabilize that slope so that it will prevent any further settlement, protect that road. And then this would want to be completed before we do any sort of overlay or overwork along there. And this one is also slated to be completed in this biennium. Scroll down a little bit. Yes, twenty-one and then construction in twenty-two. This, this is a new project. So, as part of the sixty-eighth pedestrian bicycle improvement project that the city is about to do, there was mitigation identified and required for that project by Fish and Wildlife and the tribes. And we met with them and they identified four existing driveway culverts on Blueberry Creek, which is the creek that flows in from St. Homish County and heads down sixty-second Avenue and then along two-hundred-second before it meets up with Swamp Creek, just north of all of Swamp Creek Park. And as part of mitigation for sixty-eighth, they want these four culverts replaced with fish-passable culverts. So this is, was a brand-new project just identified during the design phase for sixty-eighth project. So this is just a very conceptual estimate that I put together here. But this project would be required to be completed by March of two thousand and twenty-five. So, we put money in starting this biennium to start design in two thousand and twenty-two, and then we would have to do construction no later than the summer of twenty-twenty-four to meet the requirements of the mitigation plan. And I believe that is the last project on my list.
That's correct.
Questions? Any questions? Deputy Mayor.
My question isn't specific to Richard's projects, but as I was going through this, it's more for Joanne. As I was going through this, I noticed that there were massive drop-offs or massive predictive drop-offs in REIT in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-five compared to the other years. Joanne, could you speak to why your prediction kind of dips those two years for REIT revenue?
Well, I'm looking at the REIT projection worksheet. Is that what you're referring to? Because it's pretty consistent revenue projection from twenty-one through twenty-six. Can you be more specific about what sheet you're looking at?
Yeah, give me a second. Let me, I had it up and of course, I haven't flipping through this whole thing, so. Maybe I'm just misreading something, but let me. Sorry, just scrolling through this massive document.
I'm sure it probably, yep, to the, it doesn't have to do with surface water specifically, right?
No, 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 it's not surface water specific at all. No, it's on page, Exhibit A, page six at the top. It just says REIT Ex- Estate Excise Tax for Transportation. And it's three million, three million, seven fifty, one million, two fifty, one million. You know, dips quite a bit in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-five on that. And I'm trying to understand kind of why there's a dip there. And if I should be looking at something else, I'm happy to.
Page six?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, the, the very top line there.
Right, so this is the amount of REIT being allocated to all projects in transportation. So, the bulk of the REITs being used up in this next biennium by, you know, the, the walkways and waterways and/or the bridge. I don't know specifically off the top of my head. So we're using six million dollars of our REIT reserves in these first two years. And it drops off because there's not much left
Okay.
allocated to a project until it starts to build up again. So other resources had to come into play twenty-twenty-three and beyond. So, because of the use of REIT in the first two years.
Okay, thank you.
Juan, can you show them the, the sheet for real estate excise tax? I think that's.
Yeah, which, where, what page is that on?
That's on page twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, let me minimize it a little bit. And if you look at the REIT projection, the revenue coming in is pretty steady, and I hope that it is at least that.
Yeah.
But if you look at the projects that are consuming the REIT in the next two years, three million dollars twenty-twenty-one, three-point-two million dollars twenty-twenty-two. So, it really pulls the fund balance down to a hundred and fourteen thousand.
No, that, that makes a lot more sense. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? We won't be visiting this again. You know, it may come forward, but this in-depth, we are not going to be visiting this again. So if you've got questions, please ask them.
Could I just add that Rob was going to just give us an overview of the silly, city public works facility, which is part of the CIP plan. We brought it into the plan two years ago. We still don't have a public workshop, so we've moved the funding out, but he was going to give you a brief.
So the public works facility, okay.
Page ten.
Yeah. So, we're gonna go back to the drawing board on criteria, and we've got the council subcommittee helping us with that. We'll get, probably get started on that or resume that work in early twenty-twenty-one and and then hopefully identify a property to purchase. And then in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three, you can see money allocated for purchase and, or for purchase acquisition and hopefully construction. In the meantime, we're informally entertaining willing buyers who might want to talk to us. So far in a lull, obviously, but we'll, we'll, we'll keep our ear to the ground, so to speak, and then also redo the criteria and try to find and identify another property in twenty-twenty-one and purchase and construction starting in twenty-twenty-two.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Rob, for providing that. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, I know you're only seeing this for the first time. That's why we are delaying the public hearing and the adoption of the ordinance to next week. So, should there be more discussion next week or desires for any type of change or amendment to it that can come out during the discussion in the public hearing and can be incorporated into ordinance? If not next week, the following week.
All right, thank you. But don't you go too far. Next item on the agenda is estimates and revenues and expenditures for twenty-twenty-one. Ms. Gregory?
Thank you so much. I've got to unshare this.
You gotta share another one, right?
Correct. So, that's gone away. And I will pull up this document. And hopefully, what you see is a shaded schedule of estimates of revenues and expenditures for twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty, and the proposed twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two biennial budget. So, this presentation begins the discussion of revenue requirements and expenditures that will be proposed in the biennial budget that will be presented next week. As we've done in prior years, we are tonight providing a summary-level estimate of revenues and expenditures in all funds for both the current biennial period and the next two years. There's a statutory requirement to provide counsel with such estimates so that you can have this consideration when setting the property tax levy later in the year. And recognizing that you are just now receiving this data, there's no expectation that you would be able to digest and understand all the projections and proposed numbers presented here. You'll have that opportunity over the next six weeks as you examine the proposed budgets in much more detail and as we progress through the budget calendar. However, tonight, I can give you a sneak preview of some of the highlights for each fund with the understanding that, again, you'll get much more detail and opportunity for all of your questions when we begin to present the details of the budget next week. So you can see on this schedule, it's laid out by fund, and for each fund, we've shown the current adopted budget, the actual twenty-nineteen activity, projected twenty-twenty activity, followed by the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two proposed budgets, both for revenue and expenditures. First up is the general fund. And I'd like to start off by saying the original expenditure budget was reduced from twenty-eight point five million to twenty-seven point eight in April, when we responded to the anticipated impacts of the COVID pandemic. Twenty-nineteen expenditures also include a one-time transfer, and you may remember this, of one-point-six million, one million which went to the street fund and six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand that went to the strategic opportunities fund. And that's why the expenditures for twenty-nineteen seem so high. The twenty-twenty-one property tax levy request would be expected to generate an additional seventy-seven thousand resulting from new construction of forty-five thousand dollars. And if, if council approves, a point-six percent increase in the levy for twenty-twenty-one. As I mentioned in the Friday letter, and we haven't really in the levy for 2021. As I mentioned in the Friday letter, and we haven't really spoken specifically about this, the implicit price deflator, which is the limiting factor for setting the property tax levy, is below 1% this year. We've experienced that maybe two other times since I've been here. So we can't raise the levy the full 1% without some additional actions by the council. Otherwise, we can raise the levy by 0.6%, and the budget is built with that assumption. Sales tax for 2021 is budgeted to remain level with this year. And currently, this year, sales tax is actually 1% higher for the most recent 12 months than the prior 12 months. And we have internet sales tax to thank for that. Other major revenue categories, such as utility taxes and development fees, have been conservatively budgeted. And the proposed expenditure budgets maintain many of the discretionary reductions that we took earlier this year. One other significant factor buried in the general fund projections is the, are the expenditures related to the pandemic and the subsequent reimbursement that we expect to receive for the PPE, the human services, technology, business assistance, and the many other costs we incurred this year. The city was appropriated or awarded up to $1,084,000 from the state and the county combined. And our projections include spending this appropriation and being reimbursed the entire amount, although cash flow wise, we may not receive some of those reimbursements until the new year.
Well, Joanne, for 2020, you can take off $1 million off of revenue and $1 million off of expenditures to show the budget without the Corona's coronavirus relief funds, right?
Correct. That's exactly right.
Yeah, so just think about that. So subtract a million to take off the federal grant, and you can kind of get an idea of how much lower 2020 expenditures are.
12. Yes. It's a watch between the revenue expenditures, but when you look at it from one year to the next, you can see quite a, quite a difference. And again, we'll see this in more detail as we start to dig into the details of the budget. The next fund up for review, just briefly, is the Strategic Reserve Fund. This fund has a balance of 1.3 million, no activity anticipated in this fund other than accumulation of interest. The Strategic Opportunities Fund is expected to have a balance of $2.5 million at the end of the year. And there are a few initiatives proposed in that fund reflecting priorities of the council over the coming biennium, such as Climate Action Plan, Air Quality, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Initiative, to name a few. We're also advancing $660,000 this year to the Rota Dender and Boathouse construction, as Debbie mentioned earlier, due to the delay in the fundraising efforts of, to participate in that program, plus the $250,000 that the school district has promised us. So in order to close that project and complete the funding, wrap it up, we're going to front the money from Strategic Ops. And then as those revenues come in, we will repay that, and you'll see that in the budget. The street fund is currently not balanced by about $260,000, which would be drawing down a projected reserve of $1.3 million. And this expenditure budget was also reduced pretty drastically early in the year due to the pandemic impact. And in addition to that, unfortunately, the loss of transportation benefit district revenues has made a huge impact.
Joanne, can you hover over the, the difference between revenue and expenditure for 21 and 22 for street fund? Yeah. So you can see we're spending a little more than we're taking in, in 19 and, or I mean, 21 and 22. So about 91,000. And 170,000. Okay, so what happens is the general fund transfers money over to the street fund. And the, the general fund that we're going to be proposing for 21 and 22 is completely balanced, as you can see up there. Joanne, can you hover over that? So revenues and expenditures match each other exactly for 21 and 22. And remember, I just said that the general fund transfers money to the street fund, which is included there in the general fund. So scrolling back down to the street fund, you can see that we're deficit spending a little bit in 21 and 22. That's in keeping with the task force recommendation. They, you may recall, they said, hey, let's, we're willing to live with a little bit of deficit spending in 21, 22 during the recession, but then ramp up other revenue options later, once the recession calms down. Another thing to point here is, we'll talk about this more during the budget deliberations, but we have a couple hits to the street fund that have nothing to do with actions we've taken. Number one is I-976, the CarTab initiative, that knocks out 370, 360, $360,000 a year out of our budget. So if we would have kept that money, we would have been balanced. And another thing is, we're going to be taking on a new unfunded mandate in the street fund starting next year, and that is taking over the streetlight utility bills for residential neighborhoods. The state has said that that needs to be absorbed into the general fund, and you can't bill residents for that. That's about 200,000 a year. So if it wasn't for that unfunded mandate from the state, we'd be balanced. So.
I'm a little curious. You just said that the task force said that we could deficit spend here for.
For 21 and 22, yep.
How can the task force determine budget issues that the council is supposed to do?
It's a recommendation.
And those recommendations will be reviewed and brought forward later this month. They just, I think, felt that with the reserves that we have, we were in a position where if we needed reserves to tide us over, it wouldn't be the end of the world. Because this was, when you talk about a rainy day fund and reserves, this was definitely a rainy day to get through.
But it looks like that they authorized the deficit spending that hasn't been brought to us yet. You're going to bring it to us later.
They, they talked to you about deficit spending on September 10th.
Okay.
And the street fund has a pretty healthy reserve, so it would just be, it would be drawing down those reserves a bit. But we will definitely talk about that in more detail. So the Public Art Fund is next, and what the transactions in here basically are actions that the council approved earlier in the year, where they authorized the use of 1% for art appropriations from certain projects to be allocated to the walkways and waterways projects. So we're going to move those revenues into the fund this year and then spend them next year. And you can see with transportation benefit district, whoops, I didn't need to move the screen over. I haven't budgeted anything for the TBD. My feeling is that if revenues do come in, we'll likely have to return them, not be able to keep them. So I didn't want us to really even pretend that that's still a revenue source. I understand that later this month, Rob, something will be decided in the courts.
Probably not till November or December.
Before we ask the budget, though. Well.
No. Yeah, we're not going to find out about the TBD that, until after, after the election, for sure.
Okay.
Maybe.
That's the reason for the zero.
Yeah.
Projection. The next fund briefly is the Debt Service Fund for the Walkways and Waterways Bonds. And it is just where we pay the principal and interest on the bonds and where we take in the tax levy to pay those bonds. I am assuming that, because we will need it as we're moving full steam ahead on our walkways and waterways projects, that in early 2021, we will issue the second series of bonds, which will yield $10 million. So I have made an assumption for what that debt surface is going to be, and that's why the numbers are bigger in 2022 than they are in 2021. Usually, your first principal payment is the year subsequent to the issue of the bond, so we won't have that big payment next year. The next fund is transportation capital, a lot, big, big money here. And we've talked about the CIP. This just reflects all of those projects and revenue sources that we just, just discussed in the CIP. Real estate excise tax, again, can see we are really pulling down those balances to fund the projects in the next biennium. Not only the transportation projects, but some of the park projects. We are fortunate in that this is one revenue source that was not negatively impacted by the pandemic. The Walkways and Waterways Bond Project Fund would be where the new issue of bonds would land and give us another $10 million in revenue to fund the rest of the projects. So as you saw in the CIP, 2021, 2022 will utilize most of that bond money. Park Capital, again, we discussed this in the, the CIP and the park impact fees. We're pulling down the park impact fees again to a, a pretty low level with these projects. The transportation impact fees as well. And then, Rob, oh, I jumped over the Sammamish River Bridge. Again, most of the expenditures will be occurring in 2021, as John pointed out. We've got revenue sources to support that. Public Workshop Fund, we just went over that. Surface Water has several million dollars in reserves. And in this 2021 biennium, there are a number of surface water projects expected. So what, what, how this works between surface water management, surface water capital, is the capital projects that Richard mentioned are budgeted in the Surface Water Capital Fund. They're funded with swim money from the Surface Water Management Fund. So that's where all the fees go. And also money for the, the bridge and a small portion of sidewalk projects are anticipated to be funded with swim fees in this biennium. The Swamp Creek Basin Fund, we used to call that the King County MOA, with its original $1.4 million in reserves, is now being utilized in accordance with King County's agreement on elements of the Squire's Landing Park projects. So by the time those resources are utilized, there will not be very much left, maybe $1 to $200,000. And last but not least is the Equipment Replacement Fund. And we've been adding new equipment and vehicles with our new public works operations, so there will be more contributions going into that fund. It's a sinking fund, which provides for future replacement of large pieces of equipment and vehicles. And the big news is that we have a street sweeper budgeted to be replaced in 2021, which is very exciting. It's going to replace the nine-year-old model that we have now. So with that, with that note, I'll conclude my presentation. And in anticipation of our future budget discussions, we'll be having budget discussions probably for the next six or seven weeks. So look forward to sharing the budget with you. Thank you very much.
Questions? Councilmember Curtis?
A question on the Swamp Creek Basin Fund. If we use up most of the money in that fund, how will we pay for the dredging of Swamp Creek in future?
Well, that's, that's a good question. We used this fund a couple of times for dredging. It was not the, we got down to a point where there really wasn't any money left for dredging based on the restrictions of the agreement that we have with King County. We'll have to find a way in the swamp, surface water fund itself to, to do the dredging.
Can I jump in?
This one was sitting there, being underutilized according to the restrictions of that agreement. And now that agreement has been amended.
As far as I know, there are no plans to ever dredge Swamp Creek. So we had a study done on Swamp Creek a few years ago, that whole, what I call Delta, going between 192nd all the way to Boffaway. And the.
I think I misspoke. I, I Wallace Swamp Creek, where they dredged that one area periodically. That's what I was talking about.
Oh, Wallace Swamp Creek, okay.
Yeah.
Richard, do you want to speak to that?
Well, can I just finish my, my thought on that? We, we had an environmental study done on that delta. And the, the environmental consultant said that that delta is doing what it's supposed to be doing. And, you know, the fact that it kind of fingers out and spreads out and it creates tons of habitat. And she recommended not dredging any channels there and letting nature take its course. So, but okay, but we'll go back to the.
It's dredging, yeah, I'm sorry.
Basin there.
Yeah. So in regards to the, the pond in Wallace Swamp Creek Park, I presume you're talking about the one.
Yes.
Dredge every year or two. Yeah, as Joanne mentioned, the last time we used the Swamp Creek Basin Fund was, it's probably 2013, 14, before we hit the required fund balance that we were maintained to keep by the prior agreement. And since then, the last couple bienniums, it's just been funded out of the operation fund, the swim operational fund.
Okay.
So we do budget it in there each biennium.
Thank you. I didn't realize we had lost that opportunity to use the fund that way.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right. Ms. Gregory?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Next item is staff report. Mr. Carlinsey, I think you wanted to tell us about Cadman and some other things.
Yeah, just a quick update. We did make contact, Bryan Hampson made contact with Cadman and conveyed the request for the city to do emissions testing there. The good news is they didn't say no. What they want to do is meet with us to discuss it further and find out what we have in mind. So we're working on setting up a meeting with them on that. So.
Anything else from staff?
I'm just excited about the budget process coming up. So you will get the full budget document for 21, 22, quote unquote, hand delivered to you the night of the 12th, so a week from tonight. Actually, what we're saying is, if you want a hard copy binder of it, come in. It'll be available between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM on Monday, the 12th. Otherwise, if you just, if you're fine with just an electronic version, we'll get it to you sometime around four o'clock that day. But obviously, we won't have expected you to read the entire document between 4:00 PM and when we meet at 7:00 PM that night. But we'll give it to you, and then we'll go over some highlights, get nice and comfy that night, because that's the night I read the city manager budget message. And good news there, it's only 25 pages long this year. So, but still, I think you'll need to wear your jammies and your slippers and get nice and comfy for that. So. All right, that's all we have.
All right. Then, next item on the agenda is council member comments and reports. Let's start with Councilmember O'Kane, except she's having problems right now. So we will probably have to come back to her. Councilmember Marshall.
Thanks to all the staff and everybody for a very good
Comment. Anyway, sorry, Councilmember Marshall.
That's right. Just wanted to thank the staff tonight and everybody involved for a thorough presentation of the budget and good questions all around.
Councilmember Curtis.
Just have two updates on subcommittee work and then one question. So on the council rules and procedures, Deputy Mayor Herbie, Councilmember Marshall, and I worked on it. And we have submitted it to Dawn, and she said she would move it up in her priority list. And hopefully, we can have it done by January when we, a year from when we initiated that. We're making good progress, though. The other subcommittee is on the Public Works Criterion Process with Councilmembers Shrubnik and O'Kane. And with a flurry of emails, we've gotten to the point where we have what we think is a pretty good plan. We have some specific questions for Rob and other staff members, and we know right now budget is a priority. So as soon as the budget is done, they'll answer our few questions, we'll edit it, and then we'll be probably ready to bring it to council. And then my question, the dredging on the navigation channel. I've just totally forgotten about that. Is that, when's that supposed to happen?
Later this fall, November timeframe, I believe. City Manager?
That's what I understand, but we have Nancy Ausley standing by just in case that question came up tonight.
Hi, all. Yeah, it's scheduled for the November through January, general timeframe.
So the ferry discussion got me thinking. We, if we're going to have ferries in there, we have to have a deep enough waterway for them to get in. So I thought it was coming up pretty soon. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, and it's reminders to the public, it's not a city-funded project. It's 100% funded by the federal government, and it's being run by the federal government, the United States Army Corps of Engineers.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Nothing other than a big thank you to staff for a really great presentation. And I also had a, when does it come up in the in the meeting agenda question? And that's with the fire district consolidation. I I remember we said we were maybe going to hear from them this fall.
Next week.
Ah, okay, perfect.
Two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks.
On the 19th.
Okay.
And because of that, the meeting starts a little early that night on the 19th at 6:30 PM.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Really, I just want to thank some of my council colleagues for allowing me to join in on their one-on-ones with our city manager for the next three months. It's a great thing to always expand upon one's education, and the flexibility of schedules is really helpful. So I really appreciate their graciousness and and making me welcome. And we also celebrated Domestic Violence Awareness Month today. And I just want to remind people that there are wonderful services and programs available to you for our community, like LifeWire. There are great services out there. You do not have to live in silence and alone and in pain and walking on H tells. There are great resources for you. With that being said, I just want to thank our city staff for all your hard work. I really appreciate everything you do for us.
All right, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, one quick thing. You all should have gotten an email last Thursday, October 1st, around 4:13 PM, from Executive Constantine inviting you to the K4C meeting that is this Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00. Of course, we can't have quorum at the meeting, but I was planning on attending. If anybody else wants to join, we should just make sure that we don't end up with four of us there. But they're going to be going over their Climate Action Toolkit and a lot of other great things. And so if you're interested, I say check your emails for an email from Casey Exec@kingcounty.gov last Thursday, and you can RSVP and get information there. And I would love to see a couple of you with me.
Yeah, I'll be attending. It's on my calendar.
Can I ask a question about that? Deputy Mayor, you mentioned the quorum issue, but maybe the city attorney can weigh in this. My understanding, and I could be wrong, probably am, but if you're going to another meeting sponsored by a different entity, I think you can have more than a quorum there, but Dawn
I'm not sure. We just, we discussed it briefly, and I'm part of kind of a core group of folks that do some work. And what they said was that, you know, you guys just need to work out your own quorum issues. They weren't going to stop people from coming. So I I don't know. And yeah, maybe when you, Dawn, to weigh in on that.
Dawn, any advice?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, like
There's a general county meeting on on the, on the, yeah, C4C. And I'm wondering, can more than four, count three council be there? It's a general community meeting with the county.
Yes, you may attend other agencies' scheduled events. And that's not considered, that's an AG opinion. It's not considered a meeting as long as you don't take action, which is defined very broadly as discussing evaluating city business. So as long as you listen to other people talk about their business, that's that's fine. However, if you think there is going to be some action taken, then just notice it, a special meeting for potential quorum, that that would cover that.
So normally, I go down the line, ask anybody if they have anything to say. We've already gone through the line. However, I see that we have Corina File that wants to say something again, and Councilmember O'Kane.
I was just going to add that I confirmed for the the meeting earlier last week. So thank you, I'll be attending.
Councilmember O'Kane.
She, her
He is
is acting up. She texted me saying that she was planning on attending also, so.
He has nothing. I've RSVP'd K4C.
Yeah, that's what I got.
There we go. So just to clarify something that Councilmember File indicated last last week on Sound Cities and Committees, I've been asked to go back on to the Aging and Disabilities Committee. I served there for a number of years, and they want me to go back. So that's three committees that I will be going for, and that will be the Board of Health, the Aging and Disabilities, and the PSRC Executive Committee. So
They also extended the deadline for applying to this Wednesday, I believe.
Yes, they did, to the 7th, right? All right. If there is nothing else to come before us, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good job, Anastasia, nice meeting.
Thanks. Councilmember O'Kane, I don't know if you can hear me, but I don't have, I don't have the power to unmute you. The only thing I can do is send you a nudge that asks you, prompts you to unmute yourself. So I don't know, gosh, I can't hear you. But anyway, we'll troubleshoot and chat if we need to via email, okay? Have a good night.